Okay, let's begin. Welcome to the June 4 meeting 2024 of the Rybrook Zoning Board of Appeals. With us today, it looks like we have four of the five members. So each application, and there being only one, you have the opportunity to delay this to a future date or be heard by the four. In order to be successful, you're going to need three out of the four members voting in the affirmative for any variance to be granted. With us this evening, we have Building Inspector Stephen Fuse and Village Attorney Bob Zitt, David Heiser, who's the Board of Trustees representative, is unable to be with us this evening. He has been excused. Anyone making the presentation, please come to the podium, state your name, the nature of the variance, and I guess your relationship to the applicant. The first item that I'd like to do is open the public hearing for this application. The application is number ZBA 24-003, adjourned from April 2, 2024, Joseph Nierenberg, Nine Country Drive, widen full length of driveway and install stormwater management system. Motion open, public hearing?
Motion open.
Public hearing is open. Please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for coming out this evening. I know this is only one application, and it's a beautiful evening, and appreciate everybody coming. My name is Daniel Tartaglia. My address is 800 West Chester Avenue, Rybrook, New York. I'm an attorney, and I'm representing the Nierenbergs in connection with this application, Nine Country Ridge Drive in Rybrook, to widen their driveway. I didn't represent the Nierenbergs in March and was retained by them after that. And I was telling Mr. Nierenberg, when he called me on the phone and started to explain to me what had happened in the meeting in March and what his thoughts were about the variance that's being requested, and I apologized to him this evening. I kind of blew him off a little bit. He was saying to me, "Well, Dan, this section of the code doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, there are parts in it that are not defined, and I'm frankly not sure that it even applies to us." And I said, "Look, you know, this code is pretty tight. I've worked with this code, you know, most of my professional career, and, you know, I don't find many things in this code that don't make a lot of sense to me." So I listened to him, and in my preparation for this evening's meeting, I went back and took a look at it, certainly. And then I listened to the meeting in March and took very seriously, of course, all the board's comments. And when I read the section of the code, I kind of thought the same thing. In any residence district, except in RA-1 district, I thought, geez, that's odd. What's an RA? Where is the RA-1 district in the village? I don't know if anybody here knows. I had to pull up the map. So I pulled up the map, and I realized, oh, that's Avon Circle. Okay. So every residential district except Avon Circle, no unenclosed off-street parking facility. I thought, parking facility? Is that a parking lot? I wasn't exactly sure what that was. And then I looked through the code, and I didn't see it defined in the code. Shall be developed. Developed? I thought, this is just a driveway widening. It doesn't sound to me like it's a development. But developed within 25 feet of a front line, or shall be developed within 2 and 1/2 feet of a side or rear lot line, except as provided in G1D5 below. I went and read G1D5 below, and it really doesn't have anything to do with this application. So then I went through the code, and I thought, well, what's the difference between a driveway and an unenclosed off-street parking facility? Is there a definition of a driveway? I couldn't find a definition of a driveway. I did find a definition of a driveway in other codes, and basically what the definition was is a thoroughfare, or an improvement, or an impervious area for a vehicle to travel from point A to point B. Not park, to travel from point A to point B. So in the code, where it requires properties such as this, to show two off-street parking spaces, you have to show parking space. Now, parking space, interestingly, is defined in the code. An off-street space, this is the definition of a parking space, an off-street space available for the parking of one motor vehicle and having an area of not less than 175 square feet. That all made sense. Exclusive of passageways and driveways pertinent thereto. So you can't even count your driveway as a parking space in proving that you have the sufficient off-street parking as required by the code. So my thought was, this section of the code, and there's no, unfortunately, you know, in local codes, there's no legislative history. You can't go back and say, well, what was the planning principle behind this? What was the legislature trying to accomplish? Because we're all tethered with this. Steven's tethered with the code the way it is, you're tethered with the code the way it is, and so are we. So we either have to come and seek relief, which is what we're seeking, or maybe seek relief, and maybe, and I'm disappointed that David's not here, because maybe this section needs to have somebody take another look at it. Maybe the planning board needs to take a look at this, make a recommendation back to the Board of Trustees, and maybe this section needs to be changed, or modified, or clarified, unless I'm completely wrong. And so I'm leaving myself to your mercy to explain to me, you know, where my logic is off.
What is the extension of your logic to the village of Rybrook in total?
Meaning?
Well, you're making the case for this particular situation, but extend that to the entire village of Rybrook. And if we follow the logic for this application, and we then continue to apply that to every driveway parking space in the village of Rybrook, what would be the implication?
Well, that's exactly my point, Mr. Chairman. Every driveway, if a driveway is considered an unenclosed parking facility, every driveway in every residential zone in the village that crosses through the front yard is in violation of this section.
Okay. You know, there's a long history of this board interpreting the code, interpreting driveway, interpreting parking facility, and the word "developed." And I think that you have to look at, this board is charged with interpreting that and applying it in a practical, consistent way. Consistent is very important, because what we do in one case, we need to be cognizant of what that's going to mean for future. So that's one issue. And I disagree with your concept that facility means building. Facility means...
Oh, no, I didn't. Excuse me, the interpreter. That's not what I'm, I'm asking what it means.
Okay. Well, in a residential neighborhood, and I'll get to what something else said about the definition of a driveway, too, is that the development, the development in our view is development that will take away green space, natural water, impervious, and you clearly recognize that by talking about putting in dry wells and the like, which we appreciate. But when you get to the definition of driveway as a passage-through, okay, you could extend that to say, well, there's a one-car garage, passage-through is straight down, they don't need anything wider. So I don't think that you can say that you, I think you're parsing it apart, parsing the two parts to it, and I think it actually hurts your argument, because it's not, to widen it, he doesn't need a wider driveway right now, because he has a straight path to drive-through.
Well, whether he needs it or not begs the question as to whether or not he needs a variance for it.
No, but one of the criteria, where can I see the resolutions? You know, one of the criteria that we have to observe in, no.
Can you go up there?
Yeah. Is the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area of variance. Okay? He doesn't need to widen the driveway to be able to drive out of his driveway. He wants the widening of the space for parking, not for driving, because his driveway, if he was driving into where it's widened, that doesn't make any sense, because there's no curb cut or whatever. So I think we need to focus on the, what, you know, rather than parsing, you know, if you look at the history of this board, this board has been very accommodating to people's needs within reason. We don't, you don't see McMansions in Rybrook, you don't see people trying to put a three-car garage into a split-level house, and we're not, and Mr. Nierenberg is not doing that, but we've had to face situations like that. Or I want to widen my driveway because I have five cars. That's not our issue, okay? We want to accommodate the people to be able to use their property comfortably without impinging on their neighbors, or creating ISRs for the village, or doing something that is going to hurt us in the future. So that's what we are looking at. We're looking at what is the precedent or value. So from my perspective, I think that focusing this issue on a technical, your interpretation of the code, which is not what I, how would I interpret it, is not going to get us anywhere. What I'd like to understand, and I, and I, by the way, I think it was the April meeting, because I was not at the April meeting, I was at the March meeting, so I think that the original thing was in April, not March, just correct the record, that's all. Not a big deal. I'd like to, and you've submitted a revised plan. I'd like to focus on the revised plan, on how that works. And, you know, we try to accommodate, but we're not going to do something that is going to, we think, hurt the village, or hurt the neighbors, or create a precedent that we don't want to follow. So if you look back at our history, you'll see where people want to expand, and will say, okay, you can do it, but here are the following conditions, because we want to limit the exposure. So I think that's what we should focus on. I think that's more productive, because we can change the code, we're the board that's in charge with interpreting it. And for me, I'm not speaking for my fellow board members, I don't agree with your interpretation.
Thank you.
If I could just piggyback a little bit. I kind of agree with Steve. I'm not sure I agree with your interpretation completely, but one of the things that, the five factors that you cited in your letter, I'm not sure I agree with a couple of them. And I understand, my favorite line as a lawyer is, is who's right depends who's paying me. So I completely understand, you know, you try to make that argument. I'm not sure I agree, but the thing that Steve brought up was, you know, is less feasible. And I think there was some discussion during the meeting about not extending it straight, but having sort of an angle.
A hammerhead.
Right. Not even a hammerhead, almost like a wide, widened to the top. And the reason I actually remember that is I'm in the same position that the Nierenbergs are. I have that one-car garage with a singular driveway, and fortunately, and I am really thankful, I have that wide in top, so I call it a Y. And unfortunately, they, just many years ago, they were able to put on an extension. I'm not kind of on a bend, so they would never let me do it today, right? It was done way before I moved in. But I have what's a Y. So you have to kind of back down, and you can, but you can't put two cars near the bottom. So I'm kind of very sensitive to what, because I wanted the same thing, but as I said, you know, especially with the factor more feasible, we could review that again, but that was something that did come up. And, you know, I'd like to hear if that's even an option, but we could...
There's a plan that was submitted, which is a longer, you know, it's wider at the top, it goes straight, and it's not a Y, but it doesn't go all the way down to the curb. So I'd like to explore, you know, the rationale between this size that's in this revised plan. I don't mean to dominate your...
No, no. Steve, Steve, I'm looking at the diagram in the submission. It's on page 23 of the PDF, 23 of 35. It shows the Kultek units, and it has a picture of that driveway wide at the base of the house, and then cutting a little bit in, passing the 25-foot parking setback. Do you see that? Are you looking at that, Doc?
I have to put my computer online.
Okay.
All right, here, Steve.
Right, okay, go ahead.
Now, Steve said this was a revised. Was it a revised, or was that the original?
I was just asking my client that. Unfortunately, our engineer was unable to make it this evening.
Because it's listed in the table of contents as a revised plan.
This is basically the original.
Okay, then go to the next page, though.
One says the existing, and then the following one, I guess.
Yeah, it's contoured out.
Yes.
A little bit further down than the original, so yeah, it's a little revised there, because the other one was more rectangular, this has more of a swerve out, so they did try to...
So is that a plan, or is that the, that's the plan? That's not an existing?
That's not the existing, no.
So then the one in the other plan...
Existing goes straight down.
Existing's one singular car.
Right. But then there's another plan. If you go to the next page, there's a plan where it's angular. It's a rectangle on the side, not curved. So I don't know which is the right proposal. Do you see?
Well, I don't have the hard copy.
Wouldn't they know what's the proposed...
Well, that's what I'm asking. Here.
This one, see, that's straight down, and then it cuts in. It says revised, I think.
Yeah, this one looks like the original, and this one, from what I recall, first, this one looks like the revised.
Okay. So are we talking, that's what, are we talking about the one with the curve?
Can I see and show it to my clients a second?
There's this one here where it curves in, and then there's this one where it's straight down, it cuts in.
I remember last meeting, the, I remember the bottom. I remember the bottom curved out both ways, because Mr. Nierenberg was discussing the safety, the ease of turning and everything. So I remember it came, what I would call like a fishtail, almost it came to the bottom, and then he...
An apron there.
Right, an apron, a wide in both sides.
So I'm not sure, I don't know which one we're dealing with.
Right.
So Steve, do you have that diagram up?
No, I don't know why I don't have the original hard, they didn't submit the hard copy. Usually I'll have the hard copies.
Oh.
Let me go online.
This is, it's page 23 of the PDF, and...
I don't remember if this is different.
It may not be. It may just be used to show certain dimensions. Oh, is that, that's mine.
I'm not sure there's...
Okay. So what is the plan that we, what this board is considering?
I would go with the, with the first plan that shows the, that shows the Belgian block, is that, in the apron?
The cobblestones, yeah.
That's page 23?
Yes. You on that? Now, the 25-foot parking setback, there's a line going across, and it cuts the slab walkway. Now, if that is in fact the 25-foot dimension from the curb, you know, that's very restrictive. I mean, that is extremely restrictive, you know, in terms of what the applicant can do.
Well, it's very deep into the yard, you're right.
Very deep, very, very deep. So some relief, I think, is appropriate. What the board was concerned about was just how much relief to be able to do the kinds of things the applicant wants to do, but the smallest possible variance to get that done. I think that was our logic that we were, that we were following the last time. So I don't have a problem with expanding. It's just a question of how far down is it necessary to go.
And that's what I was trying to get to, is let's figure out what you want, and let's see if we can get there, okay? I think having it all the way down to a wider curb cut is not going to fly.
So a two-car width driveway, you're opposed personally to?
Personally, that's my view.
All the way, all the way down.
All the way rectangulally to the street, I think.
That is my personal view. I don't know what...
And I don't think this diagram is...
And this diagram is not showing a widening.
It's not showing that.
Not the one, that's why I want to know what our plan is. And I agree with Don that to hold you to that 25-foot parking setback, I think would, I think we all, we all live in town, it would be a hardship. So we want to get to some point where we can give you relief that you could live with. We're not trying to say, get out of here, but we need to have some...
Does anyone know, is there any setback issue to the left of that?
No, I don't think so. It's all this.
No.
No, no side setback.
Everything's up there.
Can you show the width of that?
Yeah.
At the base of the house versus the width at street level? Can you determine that at all? Because I can't.
Right here.
I cannot.
Right here. What's this say?
Well, it's 18 feet. On this one, this plan here, this is, this is one with wide in the original, that's 18 feet.
Is this what you mean about...
Page 23. Showing a rectangle.
Is that what you mean?
What we're looking at is not a rectangle.
I think that's existing.
You're looking at the curve, right?
Yeah. So why are they different? Without calling it revised.
This is the existing, because, because here's the tree, and here's the garage.
Yeah.
Right, correct. That's existing.
That's the existing. So what we're talking about is mushing this out here, not changing the curb cut at all.
But it's not a rectangle all the way down, like the one you had up there. So...
The curb cut's down here.
It's still wide. It's not a one-car.
I don't think, you should go to...
Right.
I think the curb cut is...
Exactly.
Here's a curb cut.
But it looks like it's right next to the house, right? If you go straight down from the garage, the curb cut is...
So we're actually looking at three different diagrams.
Oh, you're right. You're correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
I hear the board, I understand what you're trying to do. I've spoken to my client. Unfortunately, our engineer couldn't be here. We think it probably behooves all of us to adjourn this to the next available meeting, so he can be here, and so that he can answer these questions, and so in between now and then, he can interface with the building department and clarify any questions.
What I would suggest is that we have a plan that we said, this is the plan that you want us to consider, take into consideration what we've said tonight, which is going straight all the way down to a much wider is not going to work. We're willing to help you and get you some relief, so that you can have a hammerhead or, you know, a parking area, a place to turn around, so you're not backing all the way out. We're willing to work with you. But you've got to come to the podium.
And if I may, the plan that we had brought in the April meeting was not a plan that showed a double-wide width straight down to the curb. It did curve in. Now, granted, even when it curved in, it was still wider than the existing driveway, yet narrower than a complete straight line to the street.
What is the length from the house to the street? You know?
I'm not sure if it's in the plan. I've walked it off. I mean, again, it's, tried to measure that myself.
Well, I'm not sure, but this is, this is straight down from the house, so do we know how long the driveway is?
This is existing, this is proposed.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So he's showing 21...
That's 21 wide.
At its widest point.
Right.
Showing 21 feet at the widest point.
This is 18.
And 18 at the curve.
But what is this? This looks wide, at the curve...
This is existing.
I understand that, but 18 is wider.
Yes, yes. He is making it wider all the way down.
See, I guess if the idea is to accomplish some parking, why does the driveway curb cut need to be wider at the bottom?
Well, there was, you know, there's other reasons. There's other, there's other reasons why the applicant, the Nierenbergs, want to do this. And, you know, I mean, I can, I can get into that again, but Mr. Nierenberg very clearly explained, you know, at the April meeting, a lot of it has to do with maneuverability, the way the driveway is accessed. I mean, making a right-hand turn into this driveway, the choices are pull it, pull left and go right, or go over a piece of, a piece of your lawn. I mean, that's, those are the, and that's the, that's the, that's the direction they come from most often.
We, we heard that argument. I don't even want these work, we heard that...
Discussion.
Discussion. And, and to be honest, I don't think it was very persuasive. You know, again, for me, like Steve spoke for me, I'm on a curve on winding wood, and it curves, and vision's not great, but it's never really a problem. I have that same kind of issue pulling in, and I don't have that fishtail. And I, if I have to move a little wider to the left if I'm coming down one way or the other way, it's almost insignificant. I don't think there's so, I think I may have mentioned, I don't think there's so much traffic on that road that that was, it wasn't a persuasive discussion for me, that it was a safety issue, maneuverability.
Except that, what, and I was, I'm agreeing with, as I was reading it, you know, as I was reading your comments, Joe, I was agreeing, until he said, you know, there's oncoming cars around a blind turn, the way the street is, the way the street is situated. So the way Country Ridge Drive turns, you know, cars coming this way are blind, and so if they're out here, somebody's coming around here, there is a little bit of a, there is a little bit of a visibility issue.
Yep, but I still don't understand how, how hard is it to, I mean, I understand, I think the bottom of the driveway is a little narrow, right? It could be widened a little bit, I would think, but I think if you're, you're coming off Ridge Street, make a right, and then into the park, into the driveway, I think you could do it without cutting. Again, I'm not sure of the curve, but, but it's, I'm trying just to visualize...
This is the house, right?
How challenging that is, and it's...
So is it, just to make sure I understand, so we don't waste more time with the board, is it the consensus of the board that you do not want to see any widening at the street level, or you want to see less widening at the street level?
Personally, I would say less widening at the street level, and work on the smallest possible bump out for the two cars as you go down toward the driveway. As a matter of fact, yesterday, when I left our meeting in the middle of the day, the house across the street from you, the guy's backing out of his driveway into King Street, okay? He had to wait a while, make sure there were no cars coming, but he backed out into King Street, not Country Ridge Drive, but King Street, and he just proceeded to go north on King Street.
Some people have a death wish. I don't, you know, I don't know what to tell you.
But, but if you, if there's no car park there, and you want to be able to sort of back out so you can come down the driveway straight, we understand that. We get it, okay? We've been faced with that applicant, that issue before.
Many times, yes.
And we're sensitive to it.
Is there any amount of widening within the first 25-foot setback that is acceptable if no parking can be introduced in that widening?
I think, yes.
That's what's been asked, Don.
I think there is something that can be acceptable.
Then I think the plan as it currently stands, even though it is wider than the existing driveway in the 25-foot setback, you can show does not introduce parking in that widening, based on the definition of parking in the code, which is 175 square feet.
But is it the smallest possible variance?
But it does conform to the code as it stands. So it almost gets back to the point of, do we need a variance if we've brought forward a plan that technically meets the code as it stands today?
We are not going to give you the specifications. This board never gives, tells you what you have to do. What we do is we react to the architect and the applicant's proposal, so...
Steve is a great resource, so if you have a plan, talk to him about it, and if he comes to us and says, this is okay, we're going to listen to him.
But you are correct, if it meets code, then you don't need a variance. But I...
You're here because something doesn't meet code, the 25-foot, you know that.
I understand, and the requirement that the board grant the minimum amount of variance possible to satisfy the needs of the applicant is really not part of the statutory test anymore. We hear it.
Oh, it comes from the state as to what we're supposed to consider in granting a variance. It's not in the code, it's in how zoning boards are supposed to act.
You know, no, I know where it isn't, I know where it is in state law.
Okay, so...
It doesn't say that anymore.
Okay.
I mean, you can ask your counsel. We will respect your request, and we're going to, we're going to work to try to make this...
Yeah, I think it would be more helpful to have the engineer here, the engineer or the professional, the missing puzzle piece to the board. I also think that the board has an obligation to ensure that the variances that they're issuing are relatively diverse, because it's something that the board is going to be bound by. So I understand that it's not in the state, but I also think it's still an important... it's still an important guideline.
I also would suggest, before we approve the plan, that you apply for your tree permit to take the tree down.
I was instructed that, following this, if we got approval from this board on the building permit, that then the tree permit would be the secondary action.
Okay, I just want to, I, what I don't want to do is go through all this and then have to say, you can't take the tree down.
Yeah, it's also in the code that it would be looked favorably upon with an approved building permit for tree removal.
Okay, I just-
If, if the architect is going to be here, I personally would appreciate if you can, if you can provide the length-width dimensions-
Measurement.
From the base of the house all the way to the, to the street level, with the widths at the appropriate point, and the point where the bend ceases or begins, you know, whichever way you go, up or down. That would be very, very helpful to us, and, you know, we could very easily give a green light situation to something that was that well documented.
You can apologize if it wasn't clear in his-
That's okay.
Listen.
That's okay, the, the plans are for one purpose.
This is the process, and don't, no apologies-
Yeah.
Necessary. We just, we, we want to help, but we've got, we've got restrictions on us, and we have to be mindful of precedent and your neighbor, and, you know, there's always the creep, you know, it's not, this is not a case for you, but somebody wants to, you know, build the porch out, and then the way Ry Brook measures setbacks and whatever, it depends on what your neighbors do, so one neighbor goes forward, then the next one, you know, it, it, it's a domino effect. So, that is what we're supposed to do, is, is make sure that we stop those dominos. So, we, we understand-
You do see we're the last domino on the street.
Yeah, yeah. We, we understand the issues, we understand the vagaries of living in Ry Brook, with the various, with the split-level houses and the curves, and we get it, we've heard it all.
One of the things you appreciate with your time on the planning board was that when the code was, was developed, Ry Brook has seen a lot of work-at-home situations with requests to blow out the doors so that they can have a, a private area to work professionally. And that was not in the mindset of the planning process that approved the bulk standards. So, we're seeing a lot of homes now requesting to, to expand beyond those, those limits. And as you suggested, maybe the Board of Trustees needs to look at a couple of things, one of which is the realistic bulk standards with respect to the GFA on a lot of the R-15s and R-10 and R-20s.
We do appreciate, we do appreciate your constraints, understood.
And, and we have been very consistent in trying to prevent encroaching on the neighbors and McMansions, and, you know, we want to preserve what we can preserve, but we also understand the realities of living in this town.
Well, then, it's, you know, it's up to the board whether you want to-
Well, what, what we suggest is that if you want to, is go back to your architect, see if you have a plan, talk to Steve, if Steve thinks that, you know, it can be approved, and whether we need a variance or not, he'll talk to us, and we'll go from there. But I think that we, this plan isn't detailed enough for us to make a decision, we don't, we need measurements.
And, and for, again, for clarification, as we go back to the engineer and continue to discuss, the issue is any improvement, any widening within the first 25 feet, if it was a foot, is an issue, because this violates this section of the code about unenclosed parking structure.
And, and we're not opposed to going beyond the 25 feet?
Yeah.
To give you the-
But within the 25-foot, if we added a foot of width, we've introduced parking.
Yeah, because it's a variance. But we're, we're willing to, you know, we recognize, and Don said, that if you just had up to the 25 feet, that's not very practical for you, we get it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Do you want to make a formal request?
Yeah, we'd request that this be put on the, the board's next available meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good, thank you. Okay, Bob, do we have to do anything on our side for that?
No. We leave it open, we leave the hearing open, right?
Motion to continue the public hearing to the next available-
So moved.
Seconded.
Second.